The Chair will call the December 5, 2023, Meeting of the City Council to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Lesko, can you please call the roll?
Will do. Alderman Redpath.
Here.
Alderman Gregory.
Here.
Alderman Williams.
Here.
Alderman Rockford.
Here.
Alderwoman Purchase.
Here.
Alderwoman Natriano.
Here.
Alderman Carlson.
Here.
Alderwoman Connolly.
Present.
Alderman Donilon.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Mayor Buscher.
Present.
Mayor Buscher, Aquarum is, Quorum is present.
Thank you, Clerk Lesko. At this time, I'm just going to take a few minutes for us to have a moment of silence. One of our previous employees, whose wife and daughter both work at the city of Springfield, passed away unexpectedly this week. So if we could have a moment of silence for Sam Wilkerson. Thank you all.
Thank you.
The civility pledge, in the interest of civility, I pledge to promote civility by listening, being respectful of others, acknowledging that we are all striving to support and improve our community, and understanding that we, we each may have different ideas for achieving that objective. The Chair will now entertain a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the November 21, 2023, City Council meeting and approve the minutes.
So move, Mayor.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The motion carries. The Chair will now entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council first reading of the remaining ordinances into the record of this council meeting.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on the pre-council first reading? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The motion carries. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The Chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council reading of the consent agenda into the record of this council meeting.
So move.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on the consent agenda?
Mayor, I have a question.
Alderman Carlson.
And I don't know what number it is. Just one quick question for our new lobbyist, should she pass tonight? Can I ask that?
Sure.
Our lobbyist's question? Ms. Basham? And we had a good chat over the weekend. There was, there was a couple of things I wanted to ask. You know, with sessions starting in January, I think you had, you had said we're going to get quarterly updates. I mean, do you think maybe monthly during session, when they're down here, we could? Is that a possibility or not?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Would that be too much to ask?
No, not at all.
And I mean, yeah, maybe quarterly when they're out in May, but maybe monthly when things are happening, if we could just do that, so that'd be great.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Any other questions, Alderman? Alderwoman Connolly.
Thank you, Mayor. I just asked the clerk to reflect that I'll be voting present on 2023 571 and 572, since I work at the Department of Natural Resources.
Noted.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Basham. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the consent agenda passing, please vote, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion carries. The Chair will now entertain a motion to place the consent agenda on final passage.
So move.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Or votes, voting will now be open. All those in favor, please vote yes. All those opposed, please vote no. And the motion passes with 10 voting yes, none voting no. Agenda item numbers 2023-443 and 2023-537 remain tabled or in committee. The next item on the agenda is item number 2023-550, an ordinance authorizing the execution of an annexation agreement with Weedy Camp Holdings LLC, a property located at 1220 Old Toronto Road for the Office of Public Works. The Chair will now entertain a motion to hold a public hearing regarding agenda number 2023-550.
So move.
We have a motion and a second to have a public hearing? Is there anyone who has signed up to speak on this annexation? Anyone from the crowd? Any aldermen or alderwomen need to speak on this annexation?
Motion to adjourn.
So we have a motion and a second to adjourn, any discussion? All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The motion passes. The public hearing is now closed. We are going to reconvene the regular meeting of the City Council, and I get a motion for that.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to reconvene. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion passes. The Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2023-550 on final passage.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on that item? If not, the voting will now be open. All those in favor, please vote yes. All those opposed, please vote no. And the motion passes with 11 voting yes, none voting no. The next item on the agenda is item number 2023-551, an ordinance annexing certain described real property located at 1220 Old Toronto Road. The Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2023-551 on final passage.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, the voting will now be open. All those in favor, please vote yes. All those opposed, please vote no. And the motion passes with 10 voting yes, none voting no. Is there any unfinished business to bring before the City Council today? World record. You're welcome, Alderwoman Purchase.
We're not done.
All right, so now we're on to new business. And before I have aldermen or alderwomen sign up to speak, I do want to let you know there is some new business on the city side. So December 15 is a Friday. From 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., right in the lobby of this building that we're in, Municipal Center West, we are going to have a pet adoption for the holidays. The Friends of Sangamon County Animal Control are bringing over some pets. So if you don't know what to get someone for Christmas, you can come to City Hall and adopt a pet.
On my birthday.
On your birthday. Would you like one? Does Tiger need a friend?
Couple dogs.
Tiger doesn't need a friend.
All right, I thought I'd ask. Is there any aldermen or alderwomen that have any unfinished business to bring before the City Council? Alderman Redpath.
So Alderman Donilon, since you were nominated and approved to be the Budget Director, can you give us, have you had a chance?
Budget Director?
Watch it.
Budget Chair. Have you had any chance to talk to the administration about?
Alderman, if I can, Mayor.
Sure, Alderman.
Yeah, I've reached out to the, actually, the Mayor reached out to me, and we shot her some potential dates. We're thinking, and I don't have my calendar here in front of me, but we have to, still have to get together and finalize some things. But after the budget is available for the public and the aldermen, and the Mayor's had an opportunity to talk to each one of you, that we will have a target Wednesdays and Thursdays after it is released, so sometime, probably starting in the second week of January. Don't write any of it down, because we still have to, not only, we still have to get together and make sure that works with the staff and everybody, and then all of you as well. So that's sort of the outline. Does that make sense?
Yes.
I mean, I thought it was important, and it hurts from some of you already to stress the importance of trying to not have it on a council night, because we tend, believe it or not, we tend at times to go long, and then it makes the night unbearably long. So anyway, just spread it out a little bit, give the public an opportunity to come. And if someone has a desire to speak on a particular department or an issue, then they know the meeting starts at 5:30, it will not be too long after that, rather than having to wait about three hours sometimes. Does that make sense?
So, yes, it does. So there is, in the old days, we used to do things that where we would bring the budgets before the council. And before they were sent on to the, the main budget meeting, we voted on them. I want you to consider that. There's some, there's a couple of departments that I'm probably going to have some problems with. And if I, if we could work those things out where we, even if we didn't have to vote, they, they need to understand that we, we have some serious problems with a couple of different departments.
As the Mayor, can I address this?
Yeah.
Okay. So I have been meeting with all of the agencies. We still have a few more to do, to go over their budgets. Then I will make the changes that I am comfortable with as the Mayor. Then we are going to get the budget books together, and I am going to call each of you, and we're going to schedule meetings with you and go over them with you first, before they go out to the public.
That would be sufficient, Mayor. Thank you.
So if you would have asked, I would have told you.
Well, I didn't know you were doing that, or I would ask you.
Any other new business to come before the City Council? Alderman Hanauer.
Regarding the budget, one of the things that I'd like to see is, I know in the past, we've, we've had the departments give us, it's kind of their annual review, and some of the departments have gone very long on their annual review.
Are you talking to Chief Canny?
Chief Canny, actually, in his defense, wasn't the one that was up here for an hour.
Oh, I know, I think you're.
And then, but, but my point is, since these are budget hearings, if, if we want to have them come in and give a, you know, down the road, that's fine, but I would much rather see what, what their budget, what, you know, what the reasons for any pluses or minuses in their budget, you know, kind of their manpower, if there's any shifts in that, any, you know, big initiative, something like that, and deal with strict, strict budget stuff, and not get into, you know, all our departments, you know, they, they all do a great job, we know they, they, they work hard throughout the year, but in this case, I just think it would be a lot quicker, and it would, it would allow us to focus on the budget issues at hand, instead of sometimes...
Getting a sales job.
Exactly. I was, I was trying to be nice.
I know what you're saying.
I was trying to be nice. So if we could, if, if that's something we could have them work on, and I'm sure they, they would appreciate having a shortened version of, of what they've done in the past, too.
As I've been meeting with some of the agencies, I have been asking them to point out major differences in their slides to you, the aldermen and alderwomen, so you don't have to look for them, that they're there. And then I've also asked them to also give you options. So, for instance, we just talked about police and fire pension contributions today, and we want you to see options. So you are the voting members of this council, the 10 of you are the decision-making body. It's important that we give you that information upfront, so I'm asking them to do that as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Anyone else?
Yes.
Alderman Rockford.
So in the, in the past, you could get on city website, and you could pull up everybody's budget in open government. And I, I'd like to know why certain departments aren't on there, whether it's...
Like from the past, you mean, or?
Well, this, this year's budget. You know, I've, I've, I had...
It's not ready yet.
No, 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 2024.
Oh.
You know, this, this previous year. Just because there's, there's, we talked about lineman positions, and, and the green sheets will tell you what's budgeted, what's, what's already, already there, the present employees. But there's a couple that's not there, and I just, in the, in the future, moving forward for next year, that we, we post that.
I can't speak for the previous administration, but I can tell you that the Budget Director will have someone look into that, so that they're there for you if there's something missing. We'll make them out there.
Thank you.
Yeah. She'll check on that for you.
Tim also has a copy of the last year's budget, too.
Yeah, that's, that's where I went to get it, so.
Yeah, but we'll, we'll have someone from the Budget Office look if that wasn't posted last year, we can correct that.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Any other aldermen or alderwomen to speak tonight?
Men.
Okay. Then citizens who have advanced requests to sign up and speak before the council, the first citizen is Tim Reiser. I don't know that I see Mr. Reiser. Alice Ramey is the second citizen who signed up to speak.
Merry Christmas. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. You say Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Alice. The next person signed up to speak in advance is Don Collins.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Don Collins. I am with Republic Services. And so on behalf of the 36,000 nationwide employees of Republic, we'd like to thank you for giving us a really great community to pick up garbage in. We love your garbage. We appreciate the opportunity to service this community. And I'm so excited about some of the great new things that we're doing nationwide. We're doing some really great things with some really great communities, but we have an opportunity to do something amazing here in Springfield. It hit me over the weekend, and, and I thought of it, and I actually hopped in my car this morning, drove five and a half hours to come here and tell you that I have a great idea that will elevate the quality of life in Springfield, Illinois. It'll put you on the map in a way you've never been on the map, and it'll give you national recognition as a pace setter. Not trying to share any details tonight, I'm just, this is just the tickler, right? But I, I will send out an email and ask for an opportunity to meet with each of you, and just have a 30-minute conversation about your saw waste program, your environmental services, and some of the great things that are happening. I've been in the business for 35 years. I started in Miami, Florida. I've seen everything, but I've never seen what I have seen here in the last 24 months. Crazy development in technology, and the type of equipment that we're using, and our ability to communicate and track what we do. All available. You know, we're a $14 billion company. We have the money to do it. We have the expertise to do it. And we are doing that in a small handful of communities around the country, this amazing new approach. And I have 400 contracts in my eight-state area, municipal contracts, and, and I'm only talking to, or I'm only approaching Springfield, Illinois, because I think this is the right community. I think you're in the right place geographically. You have the right talent pool here, and we've got great leadership. I brought with me tonight Susan Piazza. Susan is our, our regional expert in municipal saw waste programs. And Jacob is our general manager locally. It's where the buck starts and stops every day. We pick up a lot of garbage, and he coordinates a lot of stuff to make that happen. So hope we can have the opportunity to sit down and just chat. And I appreciate you allowing me to kind of, you know, embellish, I guess, the opportunity, but it's real. It's very, very real, very genuine. I would like to work with this city to do something really amazing. So that's, that's my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Alderwoman Purchase.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Don, can you come back up?
Sorry.
It is nice to meet you in person, and I just have one small request. It's pretty cool to see the forks picking up the trash cans and dumping them, but they do not put them back on the curb, they lay them in the street. So it's hard, because people are going to work in the daytime, so they're not getting home until in the afternoon or evening, to have to pull the trash can off the street back onto the curb. So if you can look into that, I would greatly appreciate it. So I'm glad you came tonight.
Thank you, good. No, that's, that's a great point. We appreciate that. I'm sure Jacob is really glad to hear that. And the technology that we're talking about helps to eliminate some of that, so.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? The next person signed up to speak in advance is James Johnson. That'd be you, sir.
Almost didn't get here in time. Almost didn't get here in time, James.
I know, right? I was running. Thank you, good evening. Y'all know who I am. This is going to be to the start of my end-of-the-year speech. So tonight, I'm starting with the Police Department. And I know you, Hanauer, is just looking forward to what I got to say, so. First, I want to start off, I've been paying attention, and for the last several months, there's a lot going on, and there's some things that I'm going to piggyback on, that you guys in our way voted on and made your decision. So I just need to speak on some things. So one thing that was mentioned about a week ago, and that's the state police investigations. Now, there's two going on. And the one with the shelter, let's, I'm going to piggyback on that and state that, that is very important, that we hear about that investigation. Since we are opening up the shelter next month, one of the big questions is, and this is for the county and ISP, we want to know about that investigation. We want to know how that gun got in that building, and we are expecting some heads to roll because of it. Now, of course, we don't know who it was, but it doesn't matter, black, white, male, female. Something bad happened there, and we want to know why it happened, so it never happens again. Now, the other question is, where's our children going to go? If all the adults are going there, where's our children going to go from here? Mayor, I haven't heard, so I'm going to leave it up to you and the county to give the citizens of this community an answer to both of those questions, where they're going and what happened. Now, let me discuss, congrats on the Police Department new contract. They deserve that money. They need it. But... Let me say this, before I go there. My opinion, our officers, and you're, you are adamant about how you feel about the Police Department. Kudos, in agreement. But some of our officers are working way too many long hours. They've been on 12-hour shifts for I don't know how long. That's only a recipe for disaster. We have to, for the ones who want to do it, fine, but the ones who, you know, are doing it because they have to, you can't keep, make sure I say this right. You can't keep putting them in those situations of 12-hour shifts, because fatigue is going to set in, frustration is going to set in, tiredness is going to set in, and that's going to lead to something bad. So the number you want, now, I'm, I'm normally an optimist, but I'm going to be a realist right now, and I'm going to share, because that's my job, come up here and share with y'all, that's, doesn't really get expressed or not heard, so I'm going to repeat it. And some of this ain't even being repeated. But the number that you want, you're probably not going to get. If you've been paying attention, ain't nobody breaking down doors and busting down doors to be a police officer anymore. They already have talked about the number that's taking the test. So if you have that, and then you have the young people who don't want to be police officers, and our minority count really going to go down. I done spent 20-plus years fighting for diversity and for stuff coming up to this council, and right now, I feel like we're, we're losing. Like, all the hard work is going down the drain. You gave them their money, and what's going to happen is, soon as you start hiring some, the ones that are there are buying their time, then they're gone. So we're right back at the same place we been. We're going to be short from here to who knows when, because nobody is volunteering. And I know my time is up, but I want y'all to understand how important this is. We have to find something else. We have to do something else, because our city, we raise money, other cities are going to do the same thing. People aren't going to fight to come here. We're going to be in that same problem. Men are going to have to stand up and do their own policing. We're going to get to that point. I'm going to police my community, if they're available or not. My neighborhood, I'm going to police it. I'm going to do what it takes. Whatever place I'm in, I'm going to do security. I'm going to be there. I'm going to step up, just like I'm a police officer, because there's a lot of hatred going on right now. But these people don't, a lot of people don't deserve it. So men, it's a calling. Stand up, let's do what we got to do. And since my time is up, the last thing I'm going to say is, the grant money for this crime provision or whatever, now, let's, let's, let's be real about it now. We can't give it, if we're going to make complaints about whose name is on what around this horseshoe, let's do the same thing when it comes to this grant money. In my opinion, Mayor, and... Val, if you getting grant money, you shouldn't get marijuana money. So I want to see whoever's getting grant money, I want to see their plans in six months, periods, of how this money is spent. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Is there anyone else in the audience that chooses to speak to the, oh, sorry, Alderman Redpath?
James, I just want to comment on a couple of the things you said, and I understand your passion, because that's the kind of guy you are. I can tell you that, as somebody who's served in investigations for almost 30 years, I understand how, the process of how investigations go. Everybody sitting in this room agrees with you that we want to see the results of what, what happened there, because we don't know yet. Nobody does. They're still conducting the investigation, it takes a little time. So give them a little time, and we'll see what happens, because we all want to know, because that's, that's something that has to be done, could ever happen again. As far as the Police Department's raises, and, and the situation where we've corrected a problem that we've had for years around here, they did, they did get the raise, because this City Council felt the compassion to support our police, and we, and we doing that. I don't agree with your assessment that it's not going to make changes, because you got to give it a little time. And, and what I mean by that is, people are going to find out that now I can go apply for police work at the city of Springfield, and I'm going to be compensated the same as everybody else in every town the same size as ours. You're going to find out that it's a better place to work in the city of Springfield than Decatur, Bloomington, Chicago, Peoria, Rockford, Champaign. You're going to find out that it's a good place to work. We've had a very good relationship in this city with the citizens in our Police Department than you're ever going to find in any other city. When they're, when they were rioting in other cities, they weren't rioting in our city. They weren't, because, because we talked to each other, all of us. And, and, you know, as far as the diversity situation, I'm probably one of the guys that sat up here and fought for diversity more than anybody else. And I can tell you, being on this City Council for over 30 years, I can tell you, that's always been an issue. When I was the Chief of Conservation Police, I can tell you that we had to compete with the city of Springfield for the best department, for the best officers we possibly could get. And the city of Springfield has always been a good place to work, and it's going to always be a good place to work. Please give us some time, because I can tell you that what we did by, by fixing the salary problem that we had that should have been fixed years ago, if we would have been doing supplemental increases, instead of having to come and make a monster increase at this city, we wouldn't be in this mess. But we are, and we fixed it, and we're, it's going to be fixed. We're going to be able to recruit. We're not going to lose people at the three-year level that have to come in and get their certification, and take that certification someplace else. That's not going to happen. You're going to get to the end of their 20 years and say, I can't afford to stay here any longer, because I'm getting killed on salary, and I'm going to, my, my health insurance is going to go off the wall. That's changing, and it's going to change. We can't afford to lose the experience we have at our 20-year level, that's going to take that experience and go to another agency and use that. You're going to find that they're going to stay longer because of what we did to correct that inequity we had. So please give us time, and if you come back to me next year and say, hey, Red, it didn't work, and I'll agree with you, because I know the, the quality of the command staff at the Police Department. They're, they're tough, they're smart, and they know what they're doing, and I know they're going to take what we gave them and make it a better Police Department. So, thank you.
Anyone else in the audience wish to address the council? Motion for adjournment?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Can't imagine no one's opposed. Can't imagine anybody's going to be opposed. Right, Alderwoman? Not going to be opposed. I did do today, because I don't lose. How've you been? Where are you working out at? Like a CrossFit? Why, down from your house? I saw your, what is the location of your house?